I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Leonard Village Council. Today is August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We welcome everybody. I hope everybody that had a chance went to the Robert Festival, a good one. And we had good weather somehow that day, so it worked out pretty good. With that, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance and brief invocation.
A pledge made in the name of the United States of America and to their Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, we thank you that you've come before you. I'm prepared. We pray that you would help us with our decisions that we make today and be among everybody here in the village in your name, Amen.
Thank you.
It's good. It's always good.
Okay. Could we have a roll call for attendance of the village council, please?
McDonald?
Here.
Kennedy?
Excuse, excuse.
Belichick? Here. Swack?
Yes, here.
Yes.
Okay, there is a forum. Note for the record that Clerk Laurie Zelenop is president, is present, and Treasury Duty verse is excused. The councils received the minutes of the July tenth regular meeting. Are there any questions, corrections? If none, a motion to approve them would be in order.
I will make a motion to approve the July ten, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the minutes of the July tenth meeting. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the July tenth minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is agenda approval. I'd like to ask the indulgence of the council to add as a first item on the new business, a nature park presentation from our professionals at Row Professional Services. Is there any other amendments?
It looks like a council payable should be July, not June.
Where's that?
On the, on the agenda.
Oh, Treasury Report.
Just, uh...
My apologies.
Just, yeah.
It should be July. It isn't July now?
Uh, no, the council payable...
Council payable.
It's June.
Oh, okay.
It's just listed as June.
Really? That too. That's agreeable to approve the agenda with amendments? Will we stand for a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda for August two thousand and twenty-three with corrections and additions.
Okay.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended, to add the park presentation and the typo on month of council pay. That'd be July. Any questions on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say no. A motion carried. The council has received the Treasurers' Report for the month of July. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections on that? Judy is not here tonight, but I'm being able to handle some questions. If not, a motion to receive the Council's report in your...
I will make a motion to receive filed July twenty-three, February two.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Treasury, uh, receiving filed Treasury Report for July two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, we have a roll call for that motion, please.
Belichick?
Aye.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to accounts payable. The, uh... Accounts payable for July are present in the amounts shown. Is there any questions or changes? If none, a motion to pay the bills would be in order.
I will make a motion to pay the bills for July two thousand and twenty-three. In the general, eleven thousand, ninety-three dollars, forty-two cents. Major, thirty dollars, eighty-eight cents. Local, zero dollars. And Millen Park, uh, one thousand, two hundred, eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
I'll support that.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Collier?
Yes.
Okay, pay the bills. Next item on the agenda is, uh, public comment. The council has adopted a few, uh, rules for making public comments, um, basically asking that they be concise, to the point, and, uh, be no longer than three minutes. And if you need more time, the council can give you disposition for that time. Uh, questions may be followed up by on the council and as a response made to the speaker at a future time or date. So that means that you may not get an answer tonight if you do have a question, but it won't, it will, it will be responded to. Would anybody care to com- comment to the village council on matters not coming before it tonight? If not, hearing none, we'll move on to new business. First item is the nature park presentation. I'd like to introduce, uh, Paul Camira from Row Professional Services, who is, uh, lead engineer on the park project. He'll make some comments and help inform us, um, on where we are, but just so we're all on the same page, this is a preliminary, um, preliminary plan. It's subject to further amendments and, and changes, but we have to start somewhere, so this is where we'll start. Okay, with that said, Paul?
Hello, Mr. President. I'm Paul O'Meara. Thank you, health and service, for taking time to see me tonight. Um, I did print out paper copies of the concept plan where most of the discussion occurred at NLP. You want to hand those out to the...
Put someone in the chair, probably, if there's any...
Who wants to take him?
Okay, yeah, I was thinking of the council...
There are a couple more here in the conference room. None?
Thank you.
It's on the back on that...
We have...
Yeah, I grabbed it.
Oh, sorry. Did you hook it up to the projector?
Well, it's connected before I'm...
It's wonderful.
With a smartphone, it can get a range of...
And...
Is everybody comfortable as I turn the lights off for a few moments?
Mm-hmm.
Well, let's see.
If you want to go to the transcript, you have a power point.
Maybe it's running slower, so hopefully it's good. I think I'll try to use my arrow on the, um, computer. I know you can't read the writing. I think I'll stare at it there in the northwest corner of the picture. And then, um, leave my way through the park, just kind of summarize the other proposal. So, on the paper copies, it's probably more clear, but, um, currently, I'm staying in its back. Currently, the, um, crossing of the trail at Forest Street doesn't really line up straight, so we propose to move the one on the west side here, put it north, when it's more of a straight line, you want to cross through on the trail. And we would, um, have new concrete approaches with handicap markings on those, so it would be up to current code. And then there would also be better pavement markings, so that it's coming through concealed as a pedestrian crossing, as well as view science. The science would be similar to what's there today, but they would just be new and raised in this scene at night for darker weather and, um, you know, move across the street to the park side. It's just a really short stretch here. The right way is really very small in this area, so if you kept in the sidewalk, the right of way, there wouldn't be any distance between the parks and the pedestrians. So we'd like to move it back up the road a bit. You can do that in the park property, but there is a little stretch of private property that's in the park and the trail. The neighbor hopefully would be able to give us the village a visa, and we're going to construct a real short, like five-foot section there. And then moving on to the park property, um, we're proposing a four, I'm sorry, a three parking space lot, with the small number one being handicapped and two regular, as well as direct approach, where people can drive in and out. And, um, there would be a connection with the trail there that would lead you into the forest part of the park. And then to the south of the, of the parking lot, there's an X there that you can see is the recommended spot for the future of the village. The village is envisioning a twenty-by-twenty space, and I'll show some pictures of what that would look like in a few minutes. Um, that could not be a part of this particular construction project as of now. That would be just a space for the future and the funds involved. But the other thing is it would be a part of this green space, be at least two picnic tables, a trash container, a, um, kiosk, and then also a, um, donor plaque, so that donors could be recognized for the public benefit. And then we're bigger the trail, or maybe the park, I should say, is the sidewalk extended down to the south end of the property for now, for future extension, as well as the trail. Intent to mimic what was meant to be the trail, my understanding, because it was used more in the past before it got a bit overgrown, particularly on the south end. So we actually got a couple different paths. One was considered a shortcut, as well as the longer version. And the longer version measures about seven hundred feet, so not that long. The, um, shorter version is actually just about fifty feet shorter, so it's not much shorter. But it gives you a little variety of, of even part, whether luck, both ways it can. And, um, there is one culvert here by the observation deck that would be connected to the, with the end of your place, so it's in poor condition. And, um, I think that's about it. We're going to try to avoid removing trees in the trail itself as much as possible. There is some tree removal shown along the front by the sidewalk, but those are actually all trees that are either dead or are nearing the end of their life anyways, so I think it'd be better to clear those out and make some decent stakes for the sidewalk going south. If there's any, um, recommendations from the council, certainly we want to take any input that you've got, so we can make this the best it can be for the village.
Thank you.
So, oh, you want to talk about the plan? So the other things that we've got featured here are the benches. These are mimicking the polygon trail selection that's been used already for the trails that the same kind of moved here. We think the trail is picked some good things, both the benches and the, and the other items that hold up a long time and are worth the money that, um, we would take to get them out there, so that they're low maintenance. Those are recycled plastic. And then same with the picnic tables, that's from the polygon trail selections of the past, and it shows the, the price of the route, the twelve are always a piece. We're recommending two, but certainly we can adjust that if the village wants to do that. And then jumping into the kiosk, it's also the, um, the one that's been selected for the trail. This, I believe, would be more for an outfit for the, the park than for the village, rather than for the trail. So that would be likely installed somewhere near the parking lot for best visibility. And then, screen below. There we go, there's the trash receptacle. This is also a polygon trail selection, which is good for keeping out animals and something that can last a long time. And then our last slide here, I believe, is the donor. If we didn't really have a preferred recommendation on this, we'd like to get input from the village council. We could go with, um, a rock theme or something that stands up on its own, if you were a bronze or metal type thing, or you could also have something custom-made, the village is already, has a design theme going with the trail markers, which is a little red picture, and something custom-made that also may kind of follow that theme. I think that's the best one. Yep. All right, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more. Um, here's some pictures of the shelter. This is meant to be a twenty-by-twenty. Oh, sorry, the camera's really moving slow here. Tried to get it all springy.
The light that kind of followed her.
Yeah, I'm trying to show the shelters. There they are. The shelter picture is square. So these ones that we've got pictured here would run between twenty-two thousand and, um, almost up to thirty-seven thousand others. Just the shelters, there would be a category pad that would be roughly twenty-by-twenty, so that you could completely fit four picnic tables in there. And then there's obviously a lot of different roof styles that you could pick as well. And there's more than this, if you need more selections. But these we've got, tied to the vests. So I think the main thing that I'm going to need to put on is the donor plaque in the shelter. Well, you really don't need a picnic shelter tonight, because it's not really part of the park anyway, so it's just kind of to give you an idea of what could be built there in the future. All right.
Great, thanks, Paul.
Sure.
The, uh, there are a couple things that we didn't touch on that have already happened, and that is, is that the property has been surveyed, um, so, uh, we've got that part of, uh, mission, admission complete. We are going to put at least a fence across the eastern side of the park. Paul also mentioned maybe we would do the south side as well, because that's relatively close to the next door resident, so that those are potentials that aren't shown on the map at this time. But I'll open it up to the council first. Are there any comments or questions on what, what you've seen tonight? Okay, how about the public? Anybody care to... Mr. Ashley?
What type of fence?
Um, I would like it to be a not a fence with horizontal, uh, top part, because of the air trying to jump over them. A six-foot is, is my preferred, like a black aluminum, uh, fence. Paul has other fence options that we could look at, but that would be the preferred, my opinion.
And it's all the way across?
Yeah.
North to south?
North to south, on the east side of the park. That whole, the like, yeah. I don't think going up in water, though.
Yeah.
Go way up there?
The survey showed I was up a little up here, guys, and I heard stuff, my pond. And I told them, "Don't go anywhere, they're well," anyway. So you've got about three foot, four foot of my pond.
Okay. So maybe we could work something out on that with the easement?
Big bag around or something.
Or with the easement?
We'll see.
I mean, you know, we...
We'll see.
Okay. I mean, I would like to, as you know, I talked to Fred already. Fred and Mrs. Ashley and Cindy own that sliver over by the polygon trail.
Oh, okay.
I told me, well, I would like to talk with you about it. Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I'm curious, the trail along there, how far back into the sand?
I think two-thirds of the way, Paul.
Yeah. Because it is underwater.
Oh, well, that little, the shortcut is kind of like...
To take care of that.
A reroute, so if it is, if it does get wet, um, we are talking about doing some extensive, um, land, you know, changes to, to be able to put the trail there at all. And we're, we're talking at this time about it being just like the polygon trail. It's not going to be paved. It's going to be, um, milled limestone, compacted, on a base that, um, we also have solar warnings to do to determine what it's going to take to do it in those areas, like the soft areas and areas.
Okay, the culvert then. I wasn't aware of those, the culvert.
Well, there are actually a couple.
Yeah.
But, but that, the one that Paul indicated is that's where the water goes from the property to the ditch along the trail there.
Goes into our swamp.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it goes into the ditch.
I just don't want, because the village tried it years ago. I don't want the swamp drained. That's our problem. I don't want it drained.
No, and I, I want to reassure everybody that the whole, the whole theme here is to preserve the open space and the natural, the existing, um, flora and fauna, and we do want to get rid of the invaders, but, um, it's, it's, it's conceived as a passive park. It's for walking and, and just enjoying, enjoying nature and have a place for some, if you want to have a picnic or whatever.
Then why are you putting up such a tall fence if you have baby deer that come from back there?
Well, you know, it, it is possible. I know that the township, uh, offset the fence and left openings that animals could pass through.
That would work.
So, I mean, we're, this, that's why we're meeting tonight, is we want to have an idea of what residents want and don't want.
I still want any animals to feel safe back there. We've got probably twenty turkeys that live back there now, you know, doing a run down my property, the deer.
I, I believe our goal is the same. Uh, when we tried back in, uh, two thousand and ten to get a development grant from the DNR, the fence was part of, was part of the grant application, along with trying to upgrade the swamp, if you would, so that it's always preserved. The DNR didn't, didn't think that the swamp was that notable, but they don't understand that that's what our goal was, was to keep it the way it is. We're not trying to...
I'm surprised, because back when they tried to drain it, we went to the DNR, and there was some kind of plant that they stopped it completely. They would not let anybody touch it, so I'm surprised you're saying that, because you're talking years ago.
Yeah, I don't know. I wasn't on the council back then, so, so I couldn't say. And a lot of the stuff to do that you're telling, is, you know...
I probably still have the paperwork from the DNR.
Well, all I can tell you is the, the notes that I saw on the grant, they, they scored your grant application, because it's a competition with other communities, and they, they didn't have anything that they thought was outstanding about preserving, let's put it that way. They, for, to them, maybe, um, cattails and, and, um, turtles and ducks aren't the highest priority.
I'll have to hunt that out, because it was a plant that was growing back there and...
That's not, this is, that village, when we bought this property initially, brought it mainly to try and preserve it, so that it didn't get converted into something else like it almost did a couple of times, so...
And the fence is just for visitors to understand the boundaries of the park, right?
Basically.
To make sure that there's no trespassing at cross.
And there are other ways to do that, but I think a fence would work without, um, that.
The main part of the fence is that I worry about, and we're worried about, is our barnyard. We don't want people messing with the horse, or the ducks, or the geese.
They did get, not a...
That's why it has to come up to six feet, yeah.
We want the openings to be south, our, after the barnyard, at every time.
Well, as we progress, that's where it would be important to have this communication so we can get that right. And I can't think of anybody that would object to that, you know, to him, to try to do that to the animals. I, I, you know, we did discuss it, and we wanted to be, pay particular attention to any spawner animal might have to of the time, so it had to be the right kind of time.
The red ones are baskets, they're helping to be able to those. We're trying our best, but they keep coming.
It's probably true.
They multiply, though. They must get the head.
Okay, Paul, is there anything else that you've... Look, the, um, the council had a chance to see the presentation in advance, if there's any plac options really, you know, indicate as a part of the...
Doug, do you have a little bit of that mention, that one point about skews in the stone?
I had that idea.
Was there something else? I, I just don't talk about it.
I just don't use that kind of, because it is more a natural part of the park, or what we're trying to make as a park area.
And are recognizing people that are, they're not looking for a lot of recognition, let's put it that way, so, so that's probably the direction I would go to see, too.
Here, is a lot of the, how many names would be added? I mean, names would be on the plaque?
Probably the main donors, um, have, they were, the people that left requests to the village, so it would be probably two.
Would they not be a date?
No, not really.
Two with the date. Two with the date, one...
Yeah, the, like, the park, the park was inaugurated back in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and fifteen, so we would probably like to have that, yeah, that as well on there, because they were instrumental in that as well. Okay. Any other thoughts? Any other thoughts?
Well, if I can just summarize, it's our intent to, um, put together a design plan to be ready for bid, um, by November, and then at that point, we're applying, to get the plans open for construction, right? Five, seven, five percent of cost. How about how?
This is open for comments still?
Sure.
Okay. The parking lot area, we have only like two spots and one for handicap, so that's three spots. If there's a pavilion there, where do all the people come for a picnic, like a family type of small, we do, they got ten parks, where do they go to?
Not only the parking lot.
What about instead of, like, if, if the parking lot is not curved, so that, I mean, we've got, have, we park there when we work on the park now. Bring your car there, it's tough enough that you can park on the grass area. If the one end, it looks like it's sort of a turnaround, um, could be left open and not curved, you could drive off that area onto the grass.
Paul, is it curved?
We were not recommending curved something in there.
Okay.
If you could...
Well, that's, no, that's a good point, so I didn't think we had curves, but I'm not sure, I didn't read everything on that.
It's not compacted, right?
Yeah. That'd be difficult because we've, we've got enough water to manage in that area. Trying to force it to pool, trying to move it along the direction, it's all hard ground to the north, in that area.
Is the sidewalk coming in there because of the, the drain? It's not really showing.
Oh, the, uh, curved section?
Yeah, correct.
That was just net to, had some visual interest to it.
There was, there was the, the drain that's right there that would cross that path, so you kind of, it does cool around that.
Yeah, it's kind of...
Did the drain...
Watch birds with one stone by doing that. But, um, it was brought forward previously that it would be nice, instead of having a linear, plain old sidewalk, to have something that had a little character to it. And since we own the property, we don't have to stay on the right of way if we want them allowed to come up deeper out of the property. So it, it kind of, um, the, the zebra idea and the parking lot, and it's just nice that it's just not a straight line. There will be probably some, the removal of some of that vegetation at the front of, um, it's only been there 12 or 13 years, but it's, uh, some of it's, it's, it's not as hearty as I thought it would be. It's been broken down, losing that, broken out of the, I think they're cedars, something like that, so. But it's going to be landscaping will be part of the overall plan at that, at that Anything else, Paul?
Right, no, that's all I've got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay. Okay, we'll move on then, um, to item number two, which is the, uh, open, uh, the Oakland County Infrastructure Agreement. The council and some residents will remember that, that in 2021, we applied for a, uh, a grant, um, through the county. We actually applied for two grants. We got both of them. The second grant was for infrastructure, um, and we, they supported us and gave us the grant to use, uh, for the sewer study. So they've come back and they, they have a checklist of items now that they need from the village. In fact, not just the village, but most, most of the communities that got grants at that time. So the, the purpose of the agreement is because it was art for money, they have, they're responsible for it, so they've become a little more sophisticated, so they wrote up a 10-page agreement, um, that they would like the village to sign, approve, um, and then we have, they've spelled out the terms under which the money would come to the village. And that basically means that they need an invoice, they need, you know, how, how did the budget, how did we spend the money? And which we can, we were going to provide them anyways. So I'm recommending that we approve the agreement because it doesn't change anything we did or have done, and we've already spent, um, probably two-thirds of the funding for it, so we can send a request for reimbursement, uh, along when, when we get the completed project done. So, um, I guess, is there any questions from the council or the residents on that? If not, I'd appreciate...
Motion to approve the agreement for local fiscal recovery fund distribution between Oakland County and the Village of Monterey.
I will make a motion to approve the agreement.
As stated by Village of Monterey, yes.
A second, I...
A second, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, are there any questions on that? Here, none? We have a roll call, please, Laura.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Pelletich?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. We have a tree removal, um, the village, it's on the village right of way on North Street. I solicited, uh, quotes and only received one in writing. Doug, you had mentioned...
Yeah.
Nothing?
I would try again.
Well, I'd like to get it done.
How big is the street? How big is the street?
It's actually two trees, and one is really big.
Alex, he never, he's done it before.
We need licensed and insured.
I don't know if he's got, ask, mention it, so we can help him with that.
Well, uh, we got a quote, um, Triple T's Tree Service, um, there in the pier. Uh, they quoted for two, the trees, one element which is dead, it's a dead tree, a large cherry tree, chip up brush, clean up all the green, hollow way wood, for $1,800. It's a big tree.
Doesn't sound like that, then, no.
And the problem is, is that A, it, if it falls on the road, it's going to block access for a couple of our residents until it's cleaned up. If it, if, and it, the, the reason it's being, it's, it's, and there's an invasive bug or something in it that's just eating the inside of it out, and it's right at the trunk, it's right down at the very bottom. And the other is, is that the DTE and phone lines are right across the street, 30 feet away, and this tree is tall enough to take them down too, if it happened to fall that way. So, um, I really, we have, um, we have a budget of $1,000 for trees in the DPW, so we would have to use money from, um, and that's in the road, that would be from the road money, so we'd have to use major fund money to, you know, it would be secondary money to complete it for $1,800. But I'm sure we, I'm sure we can do that.
I will make a motion to approve up to $2,000 for the removal of the tree at, on North Street.
Okay.
Just in case.
Not to exceed 2,000.
Not to exceed 2,000, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions by the council?
Here, none? We have a roll call, please, Laura.
Pelletich?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Okay, once you're here, it's, um, I'll contact the, the service. And also, Doug, this being you and I, I don't have to cut that elm down. We were thinking that we, we'd take it down, but the guy said, he said it's going to be the same price. He's got, he gets the tree, it's not going to make a big difference, so I think that I'll down too. Yeah, we did talk about leaving the wood, but sometimes people don't get around to doing things in a timely manner, so I, I would prefer to just have the wood removed. They're going to, they'll chip most, you know, whatever they have to, and then the rest of the wood will be gone, so. All right, um, next item on the agenda is motorcycle ORV code. The council has received, council and myself have received complaints over the last couple years, actually, about the use of private property and people that are, uh, making a lot of noise, a lot of activity for undue long periods of time in, in relatively populated areas. So, the, uh, council decided to consider a code, code of ordinances, um, ordinance for the regulation of motorcycles, ORVs on private property, uh, because these are what are considered attractive nuisances, um, and the, uh, or nuisance operation. And it, it'll, it would apply to, uh, an ATV or a dirt bike on private property. They wouldn't be allowed to cross or go on the land in the number without written permission, which was already in the law. But, um, the only, the only open questions are, at this point, is the acreage and setback requirements. In other words, we should determine what, what size property we're going to, this would apply to. Some properties are big enough, you've got 10 acres or more, you might be able to do this and not be a nuisance to other people. So, um, we started with a gross size of not less than two acres to provide for adequate separation from adjacent properties and adjac, and occupied structures on those properties. And that they'd have to remain 50 feet, uh, from an adjoining property line. But those are up to the council within reason, um, if, if that seems fine, uh, and so be it. And then there's also a time limitation, so that it, 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 it basically causes the operator to have to take a break, um, in that, in this case, suggested hours of 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM, that's at night. And it would be limited during the day to, or in the other hours, to 60-minute sessions with a one-hour rest before the op, next operation of the vehicles. The rest period must be provided in order to avoid any disturbance of the peace within the village. The maximum of four hours of cumulative operation per day is the maximum period of operation. That's for a calendar day, and these would be considered a disturbance of the peace within the village. We already have noise regulations, but it does, and it, it does, um, require that the machine operating have a suitable muffling device, uh, to deaden the exhaust, the noise of, of the exhaust, and it, uh, also to the other restrictions that the village has in zoning ordinance for noise limitations. Of course, it also considers dust. If you create dust and it blows onto an adjacent property, visible dust shall not leave the property, boundaries of the parcel where vehicles are governed. Can't operate within the stream, creek, waterway, drainage way, wetland or flood plain, and racetracks are prohibited. And there is a definition in the, uh, in the, uh, ordinance for a racetrack, which is basically a permanent or semi-permanent construction with hills and, uh... Hill and features, so. And with that, uh, that's, that's generally what the village council is considering. So, we can discuss it further or make some changes to it, or set it for adoption, to light, or at a future meeting, when the council is with...
Do you have to have noise, do you need, do we get a noise?
Well, we should have one.
Monitor?
We should have one, but the difference between this ordinance and the zoning ordinance is, is it addresses the use of other pop, people's property more, uh, outside of what state law requires.
Yeah.
It's the same as state law, but it, it just states it in the ordinance, and, uh...
How is this enforced? By the time, by the time you call the sheriff, it's, they're done?
Yeah, it's a municipal civil infraction, um, so technically it's a village's one ordinance, so the village would administer it.
So you would get the phone call from someone?
Yeah, I, I already do that, so, no news there.
I mean, isn't it just common sense with people to be a good neighbor?
I think so, um...
There's a lot of infractions?
You know, anybody that's lived out there in a period of time, they all know that there's not a lot, not a lot of organized sports and things like that, but being in a close, close, uh, close to home.
Mm-hmm.
And this isn't, this in particular, as we talked about, it isn't an attempt to stop people from, um, using their property or...
Just to give them parameters to be a decent neighbor.
And have, have consideration for your neighbors, and...
Right.
Unfortunately...
That's not always the fact.
...denser, denser, densely populated areas of the village.
Dense, dense.
So to speak, on basically small lots, people are using the permits.
Hmm.
They don't care for the neighbor or not, they're...
So they're told once, they're told twice? What's, what goes on?
Oh, yeah. Please tell the names who stopped for a day and then...
And they're back at it again.
Starts back up and they, they just, uh, it goes on. It's always bad in spring. Everybody gets spring fear, people all in cars, and everybody's out hot and running. And that usually goes away, but sometimes this stuff just goes on and on and on, so...
Is there a lot of that in, in the community?
Um, yeah, uh, there's a lot of it, but not all of it generates complaints.
Okay.
Because people are either civil, or they stay on their own property, they don't want other people's property.
Right.
Things like that.
Okay.
But I don't think the village council wants to do is throw the baby out with the bath by saying nobody can do anything. Not that we could or wouldn't, but it is, it is sensible to have some regulations where if you do have a complaint and it's proven to be legitimate...
And you can, you can show them...
Yeah.
What they shouldn't, shouldn't be doing.
And it starts out with the normal, it's a municipal civil infraction, so first ticket, they can, if they, if they were ticketed, they, they can get a warning that they would get a municipal civil infraction, and then if that was ignored or they went ahead and continued the practice, they would have to go to, um, they'd get issued another ticket to go to, um, court.
Okay.
So it's not...
So they do have consequences then?
It's not a criminal, it's a municipal violation, so...
Okay.
Okay, any other questions now after all that?
Yes, brother.
Who exactly enforces all these ordinances?
You're looking at them.
I can figure that out.
I, I kind of enforce them to the point, um, where it becomes more of a court case type of situation. You know, we don't go to court much, well, that's how we are. People usually either respond, some people pack up and move. I mean, this happened on Davis Street, you know, but it takes a while, it's just, everybody reacts differently, I guess. Maybe I ain't working for more work, but I also sympathize with the people that have the, you know, have this problem, so, um, I'm sure it'll be portrayed as negative terms for people that have them, but most people around here have one, have enough property where it is, it really isn't an issue. It is an issue when you... It is an issue when you're, when you're on the half neighborhood, you drive, you're pounding around and around for hours, which kids are too capable of doing, you know? Kid, you know, we all did it when we were younger on bicycles and whatnot. I'm not saying we don't want them to have a fun, but there has to be a break, so.
Respect of the neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's the bottom line. So, um, okay. What's the pleasure of the council? Shall we move on or do we want to consider adoption at this time?
I will make a motion to adopt the.
May as well get it done. May as well get it done.
We'll see what happens.
See what happens.
They'll hang me up and they'll have a four orders.
I'll make, yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the changes, visions to the, uh, the noise ordinance, the, uh, it's actually the.
Adoption of the ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, Village of Leonard, Oakland County, Michigan, to be known as Code Amendment Ordinance Number One Point Zero One Three. Purposes to amend Chapter Ten, Section Ten Point Four of the Code of Ordinances, Village of Leonard, Oakland County, Michigan, to clarify the definition of abuse of an animal and to amend Chapter Eighteen, Section Eighteen Point Two, to protect the health, safety and general welfare of persons and property by regulating the use of all, use of all terrain vehicles and dirt bikes in concentration operation to those areas which are most compatible with such uses. The, uh, there was a mistake in the, the reference there to an animal, and I just realized that he included it in here, was, uh, there was a typo in the ordinance, the existing ordinance regarding abuse of animals. And it said, uh, the language should have read, "A person shall not abuse, mistreat, torment or treat any animal." And so they took out the deal word.
Should it be mistreat?
Yeah, or mistreat. Okay. So. Is that good? And we're, and so none of the writers inside will try, will try it with the times and.
Like you said, I think that, that seems fair because it allows the, it allows use with limitations.
And if, if we find there's a problem, we can come back and address it.
Okay.
We may hear more about it. Okay, so there's a motion by trustee Swack, please do a second.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, so can we have a roll call in for adoption of the ordinance, please?
Swack, yes.
Elchick?
Yes. Hawkins?
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes. And does, will have to get this in favor of the next, next statement. Okay, so the motion carries. All right, moving on to poll business. These EPW well repair costs approved by the council last month did not work out exactly as we had hoped. The, the, the old two inch well by the EPW building was in such poorer condition that the well builders suggested that since we had a four inch well for the, um, fire protection, we build a buried water tank next to the EPW for fire protection, that we should rather use that well rather than try to fix the two inch well. So I contacted Addison Township and the fire department said that they don't use that tank anymore because their trucks draft so well and the tank is so small that it's more trouble than it's worth. They have other large facilities, including Cooper Standard facility, the tank there, that they can direct from there. That they don't need it. So, I made an executive decision to authorize the repair at a cost of fifty-five hundred dollars, which is a thousand dollars more than the council authorized me. But given that we've been out of water for two months and hadn't been able to do some of the basic things, wash the vehicles and stuff, I, I told them, no, I haven't. So I'm back here hat in hand, asking for forgiveness and for your support in, in authorizing the additional thousand dollars.
No, it's, it's a good board.
Yeah, there's only thing about it.
Okay, there's one, but I have to make a.
That was, that was the first thing I mentioned before I even considered that.
I will make a motion to approve the additional one thousand dollars for the DPW well repair.
A second?
Is there a second?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the motion? Oh, can we have a roll call, please, Lori, for that?
McDonald?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Elchick?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the support. Okay, um, the next item is in regards to forty-two eighty-five Forest. We have a court date August sixteenth, which is this week, at which I will be in attendance, our legal counsel will be in attendance, and probably our building official will be there at District Court to, uh, for the violation that was sent to forty-two eighty-five Forest. They have not responded to the village at all. I don't know whether, they ignored us the last time we had a problem, so, which worked out to our benefit because then the judge just said, okay, you know, do what you gotta do. So hopefully the same thing will happen, but, but if not, we'll be prepared either way.
What's the violation?
Um, violation of the property maintenance regulations and the hazardous building regulations. So, um, basically we said the roof, the roof has been bad for almost a year now, I think. There's been a hole in it, a couple of holes. It had the, um, it hasn't been maintained securely. So we're gonna go, go to court and plead our case. This is part of a process to eventually have the property, the, the structure either removed or hopefully the owners will fix it, or the third option is sell it to, to somebody. Then we'll take responsibility for it.
Are you aware that property is currently under auction?
Yeah.
Or on an auction with a seventy thousand dollar minimum bid?
Yeah, I, we've heard from seventy to a hundred thousand somewhere.
That was their minimum bid was seventy thousand dollars.
How much property is there?
It's less than a acre.
Okay.
But, but.
Just a little bit?
I think that's less than a acre then. It's a funny shaped property because it runs along a trail.
So what's acreage going for in Oakland? What's, how much is, is it going for, property in this area, just property? So it's just basically for the property that they're.
Well, that property isn't very, very well sealed, it's a lot of water.
Okay.
Subject system on it is not working, wasn't working well the last time.
So if they condemn it, then what, then they have to, have to remove it?
Yeah, um, it would be, we wouldn't be, what, what happens normally is, um, the building official will assemble a construction lawyer, contractor, and a rep, a citizen representative, and they look at the property, they have a hearing, and the owner can come forward and make a pitch to see if he's gonna fix it or whatever. And then if he doesn't show or if it doesn't materialize, then, um, we go to court and get it passed, the judge to authorize the village to remove the nuisance, which basically means to level the house and then we would place a lien on the property for the cost of doing that. Similar thing happened if, you guys, anybody remember the house down by Richters on Lakeville Lake? That, the cat, the cat guy, yeah, they.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Same thing happened there. Property owners didn't do anything, the house was condemned. It was condemned for health reasons or that was this. Okay. So. Answer your question. Guys, making me be more long-winded than I usually am. So, okay, so anyway, I just wanted the council to know what's going on.
Okay, that's tomorrow then. Tomorrow's fifteen, or? Okay.
Um, as you, as you noticed on your agenda and from my note to the council, we originally were gonna have a, a block grant relocation today for our block grant monies, but due to the county's schedule and timing, Lori consulted with them and with us and me, and, uh, we're waiting to see what they're, what they're gonna do here. They've beaten the sweep that day earlier.
Yeah, basically, I mean, they're kinda like circle back on the whole CDBG thing and, and how it's done. We're gonna talk about moving some of the, the funds and to remove architectural barriers. And we've used that for, you know, curb cuts and, and other things like that. And unfortunately, that money can't be used towards sidewalks like we would like. So, um, basically, the Village of Leonard is on two census tracts. Those census tracts are broken into blocks. We have eleven blocks, each of those blocks are unique. Kinda what I'm hoping we can do is talk to Oakland County and find out if there's funds available that maybe we could tailor better to each unique block. If, um, they wanna give funds to low to moderate income households. And so there's lots of opportunity for us to be able to use funding, but there's been some roadblocks on our way in the past as far as being able to utilize those funds. You know, firstly, we always try to help out our homeowners, you know, when we can, and that's why a lot of money goes into that. When it's left over and not used, um, it's kinda left over for us to, to make decisions of the community is how we might utilize those funds, but it's very, very tight and structured what we can do. So I'm just trying to maybe kick the tires, try something different, see if there's not another way that maybe we can look at opportunities for the village. And I, you know, I asked Mike's permission, um, if we could maybe just take a little bit longer and explore it. So, um, I filed for an extension. So, um, hopefully they'll have the answers for us tomorrow. And then, um, we can have a conversation hopefully next week or next month about it.
Well, I appreciate that, Lori. So the village court is basically the administrator for our block grant program. So I rely, you know, the council relies on Lori for her recommendations, the guy with Sunday. Okay, so then, uh, that's all we got for that. EPW, uh, well fixed, thank goodness, that's good. To my report, uh, we had no FOIA requests, um, or applications for, uh, block grant funding. The ordinance enforcement, you know about forty-two eighty-five Forest. I also had a complaint about sign violation and treaties delivered, which is still being investigated, stated, as they should say. Next, uh, DTE and Addison Leonard have been hard hit by the winter storm or the summer storms. Uh, Addison's, Addison is blaming winds, pure and simple. They're, they're just the same company line. But they are sinking more money. They're still working, they're putting up new poles and new insulators and doing a little more maintenance. Uh, nature park, I think we heard today from Paul about the nature park, so I think that's covered. I did receive a report from the marijuana regulatory council, which the village is a member. Basically, it's indicating that, uh, there's continued interest by communities to have more assistance from the state on handling marijuana licensing. It's, it, it's a big deal, um, regulating something like that. And for this village, it's an administrative nightmare, to be honest. It's just one more level of regulations and dealing. Also, I wanna commend, uh, the fire department. Oakland County has a hazard mitigation plan that includes all the communities of Oakland County. The fire chief, as he has in the past, is, uh, represents, has represented us, um, at Oak, at Oakland County, so that we're, so that the village is protected along with Addison Township. And, uh, I also attended a mandatory hazard mitigation plan seminar online that's required of every community so that each community then becomes eligible for FEMA assistance should the need arise. You have to attend, the, the, somebody from the village has to attend and represent. So I, I represented us at that. Jerry was representing us as the actual operational manager, because he manages the, or the township fire department. Okay, local road improvement plan. As you may recall, we, uh, applied for and received a grant from Oakland County for, uh, secondary roads. We were gonna, uh, do use asphalt millings on basis street. Unfortunately, I can't find asphalt millings. And, uh, the contractor that thought he would be able to help us with it at a reduced cost was not able to do so. So I've asked the county to, uh, put us down as a three year project so that if we can accumulate enough money, we can go forward with it either when the money's available or we find the millions and contractor to do the job. So I just, so that means that we, we probably won't spend any money on that project this year. Now, if you may recall, Dominic, the voice outlet is doing the science boards. Uh, he's, he's not even out, uh, he said he's got the science completed, he's working on making the posts and stuff like that. So I expect before too long we'll have that finished. And then, uh, a bit of good news, uh, the council, uh, sponsored the village, sponsored the park grant that was, uh, Pollyant, to support the Pollyant Trail. And they were awarded twenty-five thousand dollars for that. So they're, they're very happy and appreciative of that as well. Okay. Finally, um, I wanted to ask Paul, as long as he's here, for an update on the sewer, uh, sewer study. We will give him some feedback if he needs any, um, so briefly, Paul, can you give us the status?
Sure. So, um, assuming the council doesn't know much of what the committee's done or should, should they?
Um. In broad terms, no.
So, um, back when we were first hired to do the sewer study for the, um, village, there was the intent to have a five-member committee that would help steer us and we would leave with them on a regular basis and kind of get guidance on where to go. There was questions that would come up. And we were able to manage to fill four of those positions and even worked with four people, two of them in council members. And, um, we last met in February and we met five different times. We, um, first focused on which parts of the village really need to be serviced. Some parts, it's not really practical or necessary to, to put sewers in the entire village. So a map is drawn and I think, um, I forget the number, I wanna save. I don't have the number, but, um.
Hundred and fifteen?
Hundred and, you know, it was a hundred and fifteen, um, REUs, which is, we have a, in sewers, you kind of assume one single family house is a unit, a residential unit. So if you've got a, a bigger user like a business, then there's ways to convert and create like maybe two or three or four units for a business that would use more sewer. And, um, so we came up with a hundred and fifteen units of people that would, would pay into the district if everybody was given the chance to have a sewer outlet. And the, the local collection system was a pretty simple element of it. We would, um, there's a lot of ups and downs and kind of a lot of flat areas in the village. We would, um, recommend a, a low pressure system where everybody would, um, have their own onsite pump and little septic tank that would, um, collect enough water from your own building to, to start then letting it be pumped into the public system, which would be a small, like two inch height is all it would be, that would run down the street and collect water from various houses and businesses and take it someplace. So that part was relatively simple, but the place where to take it was really the, the challenge. So, um, there's various levels of restriction if you have a, a small system versus ones a bit bigger. We first wanted to do a, a community septic system would be the best, uh, most inexpensive to build. We first wanted to do a community septic system would be the best, most inexpensive to build and maintain. But for the district that we sized, it was too large for that, it wouldn't be approved. So we really, we actually came back after looking at some other things, tried to explore that further, but it just wasn't looking like that made sense. So our best option for a long time was actually pumping it all the way to Oxford Township. We met with the township and they were pretty open-minded about it. They got extra capacity and they could take on the village, but it obviously raises some questions of, we're gonna build a sewer that's gonna go a long distance and potentially go past Lakeville Lake and parts of Addison Township. And there was concern with Lakeville Lake people would also want to get involved. And that would obviously complicate it and make it more expensive potentially. And Addison Township, there's been some pros and cons to that. Some people want to see that happen in the township at all. So there'd be some hurdles to pass through that. But in the end, the cost involved in order to pay the township what it would take to contribute to their sewer system was considered cost prohibitive. So then we went back to the drawing board and looked at our more local treatment type options, and it looks like the lagoon system would be the best, which tends to be pretty popular with other little villages in Michigan or this site. So just as a sample of how much it would cost, we looked at the, there's a large vacant property in the southwest corner of the village. It's kind of hardly accessible, it's south of the trail. Doesn't really have a vehicle access, it's being farmed right down. The soils are pretty good there. The Clark drain runs through the side of part of it, but there'd still be enough space there to build a two-lagoon system. And when we added that plus the... I know it sounds like a lot of money. We came up, actually, the best option to pay for both the local collection as well as the lagoon system is estimating at $114,000 per unit. So that obviously could be paid over a long time, even without a grant. I understand that you can get a 40-year loan, which breaks that down to like $3,000 a year for that sewage.
That doesn't include...
That doesn't include your onsite improvements, which would be about another $4,000. That'd be payment. Quick, obviously, if you're gonna connect to the concrete, let's come in, build your pump and your onsite tank would be in the front yard. So the last time the committee met, unfortunately, we didn't have a forum, but the people who were present felt that that was the best option. And so the committee should likely meet again at some point and then see if they want to pass the reclamation, which would then come to the council.
And thank you, Paul.
Right.
Any questions from the council with Paul at this point? I've asked you to wrap this study up. I think we're at the point where we've done, we've explored, I think, way more than he ever thought. We were between 40 million dollar Oscar out and having something local. The only thing that would have, the nicest thing would have been to have a community septic system, but there's too many, there's too many properties downtown that can't, you have too many IRUs that the state won't permit a community septic system the size we would be. That's the bottom line. And Paul alluded to the fact that he even tried to see if they would approve two systems rather than just one, and they wouldn't have any power. So we really, the lagoon system is really the only practical, realistic option, and it's still incredibly expensive, $20,000. Today, if we built it today, it'd probably be 15 million, but in two years' time, it'll be 20 million.
Who has a lagoon system locally?
What's that?
Who has a lagoon system locally?
Dryden and Metamora both are operating little lagoon systems.
And there's a private system at Copper Hills called Close.
Dryden has a lagoon system?
Yeah, for the center.
So say if we go with the lagoon system, like we mentioned before, like where, basically, where in the village it would cover. If somebody, like a resident that's in the coverage area, can they decide not to get covered? And also, if they were to sell their property or house, would that mortgage go to the new buyer? Or like, how would that work out?
Those are good questions. And my discussions with Michigan Department of Agriculture, in our situation, with so few properties covered, we would not have the luxury and they would not allow us to, because of the amount of money we were borrowing, to not include everybody. So you could not opt out. The residents that we would serve could not opt out. They, the council would be the one to decide whether you would require a payoff upon sale or allow them to pass the debt on to the next property owner. That's up to the village council that regulates it. As well as we would set the district, who would be served and who would not.
And that's not something that...
Well, the...
We would spread across the entire district?
Yeah, it's spread on the district itself, not the entire village.
So just the people that would be on the system?
Yeah.
So they'll be the ones that would bear the cost?
Yeah, the system would, that's a good, it leads to another point. The system would be right-sized for the properties that would be served by it. We would not be able to expand it. Nobody could come in and say, "I wanna hook into your sewers." Simply put, we just wouldn't have the capacity for that. So... But it would be sized, and also that if the commercial properties, for example,...
Were operating.
That we think would be in all users, that would be... Right. Yeah, they, they're looking at what potential uses of properties that are in the district. And that's part of that consideration.
Do they have an idea how many homes in the district would be served? Would be total, 50 homes?
It's closer to 60, I wonder.
Yeah, it's like a six, seven, eight properties probably, and then there's also commercial property, all the community property.
Yeah.
At least the ones down in town.
I just feel like for the residents, it could be challenging, especially with everything becoming so expensive. I would hate to see somebody move to the village because they can't afford, you know, their mortgage. And now on top of their mortgage, they have to pay for sewer. That's like the only thing that would be challenging.
Looks like that'd be $2,500 a year over 40 years.
People that would benefit...
If their sewers aren't working, the health care is not gonna okay it to be fixed.
You know, I get both sides, I'm just trying to...
That's a two-sided coin because if the county, what is the responsibility of the community if we have, if we do have a septic failure? Are we responsible because they have that property? That we have to, we now are gonna have our own sewer system so that maybe a dozen properties have the potential of failing? I mean, that's not kind of how America is set up. You're supposed to stand up on your own. But if it would benefit most of the people, if you could find the benefit, then... That's why I have suggested that we probably would have to put this, I would recommend it be on the ballot of the next general election. Of course, it would only be, we would have to designate who would be in the system because they would be the only ones to be able to vote on it. That's frankly the only fair way, I think, to do it. I don't, I don't relish the idea of telling someone that you have to carry this much debt. And it's especially significant since it is so costly and we're such, you know, we've got 103... Hey, residents, we got 333, 337. We, we don't have a lot, but 377, I'm sorry, 377 of our others. So, and that's, you know, we're on, all of us are on, there's 150 homes plus, you know, a couple multiples. But, so it's a big burden, it's huge.
There's no grants?
One, I would say the council's willing to accept, but only if the residents are gonna say, "Okay." You know, I think they should have that right.
So I think at the end of this, we kind of achieved, we've at least achieved the goal of finding out what it would take, what on earth it would cost.
Right.
So the residents do know that.
Which was the whole point.
That was the entire point. That was, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Does anybody else have a question? Thank you, Paul. Appreciate your standing for the management project. Right, we have the trustee, committee reports, Senator Crystal, committee. It was successful, I think I, I think the Fire Department, they gave some on for their on... Assisting residents of Addison after a fire disaster? Committee, I haven't heard anything. Nice, nice, lovely, it's all okay. Senator Crystal, committee, we've done...
Right, the music at the mill will not be on Thursday, it's gonna be on Friday because of the rain that's supposed to come. Seven o'clock, and the band said Friday's good for them, so we're hoping it works out. And there will be a message going out on... Yeah, Facebook.
North Oakland Transportation Authority parking lot destruction is beginning shortly. They expanded three additional routes in Orion, Oxford, and Addison Townships. They've also, they're also supplementing Brandon Township and ordered five buses to continue service, and maybe five more that are just not available. So we've gotta wait our votes. Planning Commission, anything, listen?
We were in a meeting last month, but it got canceled because of the building lost power. So we are going to have a meeting this Thursday.
As you heard, the village adopted that new code. We did it, instead of going through the zoning ordinance, we went through the code ordinances. So that was what I've been worried about, having to fill in. The planning commission discussed it, but it's, you could still discuss it, but, but, yeah, we did it through. The committee's preferred to do it through the code ordinances. Okay, there's meeting this Wednesday for pie and fowl. We've discussed parts, and nothing's changed in the community development block grant. I have no other correspondence. Lori, do you have any? I guess we can, if anybody wants to. I'll pay your emotions tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight, for your participation. Enjoy the rest of the summer.